Good evening, everyone. I want to call our Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, May the 19th, 2015 to order. Madam Clerk, I'm going to do the roll call and announce that everyone is here. All the Commissioners are here, and the Deputy County Managers are here. I would ask you in the audience if you would silence your mobile devices at this time. If you would, for me, please check those. And if you are coming to the microphone, please pull the microphone as close to you as you can at the podium or the table over there. I'd like to make an announcement also that we are not streaming live tonight. There is an Internet issue. It is not an issue of the Burke County Board of Commissioners. It is an Internet issue that we will not be streaming a live broadcast tonight. With us tonight, we have Mr. Reverend Michael R. Bailey, pastor of the First Presbyterian Church, who will be doing our invocation. And just after his invocation, the Moll Elementary School Government Association will be doing our pledge of allegiance. So if you will rise with me at this time, Pastor Bailey, if you'll come to the podium and do our invocation.
I invite all who wish to join me in prayer to do so now. Let us pray. Gracious God, we pause now in acknowledgement of your greatness and wisdom and our need for your guidance. So teach us what we need to know, command us what to do. We learn from Scriptures that doing your will requires not long words or academic degrees or popularity, but only to listen and obey to your commands, to do justice, to love kindness, and to walk humbly with you, our God. So we make this our prayer tonight for this county and for this meeting of its leaders. We ask in particular that you be with and bless those of our county who stand in need this evening, whether they need food, shelter, or medicine, or a friend, or a job, or a miracle, or a jolt, whatever the needs of the people of this community be. We ask that you provide it and give us all such faith and trust in you that we might accept what you give with grateful hearts. On this night, we are also remembering with gratitude those who have given their lives in service to their country and in defense of freedom. Lead and guide this meeting tonight. Prosper those things that are in accord with your will and cause to fail those things which are not. All these things we ask with an utter sense of reverence, privilege, humility, and gratitude. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, if y'all will come forward for Moll. Doing great.
Stand, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm really gonna mess you up now. I want you to take them all back down front so we can get a picture.
That's all right.
All right, all of you proud parents, come on up front so you can get good pictures. Moving on to item number four, fellow Commissioners, you have in front of you the pre-agenda minutes for April the 7th, 2015, and also the regular meeting on April the 28th, 2015. And these are up for approval.
Chairman, I assume you will close together?
Please, sir.
I approve that they be approved as surrender.
All right, everybody's heard Mayor's motion. All in favor, by signify by raising your right hands. It'll be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number five is the approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, under items for decision, items number three and number four, which is the selection of the county manager at risk and the selection of the architectural facility design services for the East Burke Library senior citizen. We've been asked to table those two items to June the 16th. We received approximately 12, wasn't it, 12 RFPs for that. And I think the county manager and staff want to interview four of these people, four different firms, for this selection process. So those are the only two items that we would like to move off of this agenda. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion for the remainder of the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Okay, that'll be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Okay, give me just one second. I'm having an Internet problem here. Moving on to item number six is our presentations. What page is that on, Kay?
58 for our scheduled public hearings.
Okay. Our scheduled public hearings moving into the county managers. Our rural grant building reuse application for Project Pinstripe and public hearing, that'll be presented by Bryan Steen, County Manager. Bryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have before you for your consideration a calling for a public hearing for a grant related to a building reuse application for Project Pinstripe. The application has been submitted by the City of Morganton on behalf of the project for $410,000 rural grant building reuse with the North Carolina Department of Commerce. The grant requires a local match of 5%. The total local match is $20,500, which the City of Morganton and Burke County will participate in 50% apiece. So that will leave us with an amount for the county to put up of $10,250 due in fiscal 2015-16. The company is investing to improve its warehouse and distribution operations at its existing facilities here in Morganton. And the company will invest $735,000 in the next two years to upgrade the building roof, develop interior office space, install racking systems, new lighting and air conditioning, as well as their parking lot improvements. These improvements are needed to maintain the building and improve the efficiency of the warehouse operation. The company commits to creating 41 full-time positions, but the overall plans are to create 77 new jobs at the facility. Again, the county's responsibility will be to provide $10,250 in grant match along with the city.
All right, thank you, Bryan. Madam Clerk, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the rural grant building reuse application for Project Pinstripe? Seeing no one, Madam Clerk, I will close the public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions for Bryan on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, one question in particular. I noticed in the application, it is called it's set tier one, and this year we're tier two. Does that make a difference in that application?
I don't think that'll have a bearing on this. It might, would've had a bearing on some other types of incentives, but not for this particular grant.
Okay. Should it be corrected to tier two or just leave it at tier one?
I'll be glad to notify Morganton. They're the ones that actually completed the application.
The pay scale is 23.89. Is that above the average? I was gonna look that up, but I didn't get a chance. Stayed in Hayfield too long today.
Yes, sir, I understand. I don't have that information with me right now.
But we do welcome the 41 to 77 guys.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Bryan.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to authorize the county manager to issue letters of a commitment to fund 50% of the local grant match with the City of Morganton for Project Pinstripe.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That'll be five to nothing, I think, Madam Clerk. All right, moving on to our informal public comments. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, we have one speaker, Mr. Jesse Fisher.
Mr. Fisher, if you'll come up to this podium here and please state your name from the record and your address. That's all we'll need.
My name is Jesse Fisher. I live at 5129 Crawley Dale Street. My wife Jeanne and I own and operate Fisher Mobile Home Park in the Salem area. I'm here tonight to speak for a moment, if I can, about the proposed new jail. I see that there's a difference in the cost of putting the jail downtown or putting it on our own property that we already own of at least a million dollars. My suggestion is forget putting it downtown, put it out on our property we already own, and put a courthouse with it. That was the original plan when Burke Catawba Detention Center was built, was to move the courthouse out there. And politics got in the way, and it was sold. Build us something that's gonna last 40, 50 years, put the courthouse out there with it, and let's be done with it. You're gonna need office space. You're bound to be needing office space somewhere so the present courthouse could be used for something else. But let's keep politics out of this thing. I don't care whether you're Republican or Democrat. Let's keep politics out of this thing. Let's put it on our own property, and let's put a courthouse with it. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, Jesse. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll turn that over to County Manager Bryan Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have several items on your consent agenda. Number one, clerk, appointment to the Burke County Board of Adjustment. Number two, clerk, removal of member from the Morganton Planning Board, ETJ. Item three, clerk, removal of member from the Parks and Recreation Commission. Item four, clerk, appointment and removal to Library Board of Trustees. Number five, clerk, appointments to nursing home community advisory committee. Number six, county manager, Western Piedmont Jobs Training Consortium Resolution. Number seven, county manager, ordinance amending Chapter 50 of the Burke County Code of Ordinances. Item eight, HR, amendment to Section 4.03, position vacancy announcements of personnel policy. Item nine, HR, paralegal to the county manager. Item 10, tax EMS collections report for March 2015. Item 11, tax release refund report for April 2015. And the final item, item 12, tax collection report for April 2015.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard Bryan's report. What's the pleasure of the board on the consent item agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you've heard Wayne's motion for all 12 items. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Bryan. Moving on, our items of decision. Item number one is the Community Development for Parks Approval of the Burke County Parks and Recreation Master Plan presented by Scott Carpenter, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board Members, and Madam Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'm glad that we're finally bringing this master plan forward for your consideration. We started this planning process over a year ago. I believe it was around December 2013 that we appointed a committee to begin looking at this plan. And we started meeting in February of 2014. So the whole process of actually developing the plan took about 10 months. And during that time, we had committee meetings. We discussed the current situation of the parks. We discussed future needs. We did a survey at several of the venues that were going on as far as fairs. And we did pretty well. We got input from around 800 individuals through that survey process. So we interpret that to be around 2,400 members of families that did give us input. Something that was a little different about this comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan than the past one is we tried to be a little more realistic and not just identify things that were a shortfall. So we didn't just look at, we need this and we need that, and we're short this tennis courts, and we're short on these facilities. We tried to look strategically at what's realistic to do. And so part of the process involved laying out the types of projects that the board should consider. And one of the most important things that came out of the process is that we need to focus on our existing facilities and upgrading them, making them handicap accessible, and also not just handicap accessible, but accessible to the elderly and to others, and improving what we have. We also did something a little different in this plan in that we decided that we need to look at all the recreational opportunities that Burke County has. And a lot of those opportunities aren't necessarily physical facilities like gymnasiums or ballfields and that kind of thing. A lot of those things are offered up through the state parks. They're offered through our Lake James, South Mountains State Park. And so we have a lot of hiking and biking and boating and other recreational things that don't normally just fall within a comprehensive type of plan, even though those are available to us. We also looked in depth at what the towns offer because we realized that as a county, that all the towns are part of the county and that the citizens benefit from things that the towns are offering. And so we tried to identify those resources as well. One of the new things that we did look at in this plan, which I'm not aware of any other comprehensive Parks and Recreation Plan having, is a section on ecotourism and trying to develop recreational opportunities that benefit not only the county residents, but will also serve to, as a magnet, to bring other people from outside the county to enjoy the abundance of things that we have. And I know we've been in a lot of discussions from time to time on those things about the Pisgah National Forest and that the state parks offer. So this process and initiative in this plan broke out the plan into seven basic sections. So of course, there's an introductory section talking about the existing things that we have. There was a population trends and projections section. And since the population of the county is relatively flat and all the projections for growth are flat, and some projections even show a slight decrease, I think, you know, that it's realistic to say that because of that, this plan doesn't need to forecast a whole lot of new big type of recreational facilities to be built. The only way you would head in that direction would be if you're doing it for an economic development region, and you decided, well, we need to do something like the City of Morganton to bring in a lot of parks and recreational type of activity through ballfields, regional, national events. So we didn't really see that as happening in the short term. This plan is 20 years in nature. Section three looks at the existing park facilities. And like I said, a whole lot of the facilities are actually owned by somebody else other than Burke County. Section four is recreation needs assessment. And in that assessment, there's a few areas that we lag behind on. Others were ahead of the average county in. And a lot of these comparisons were done within the region, within the uniform area. Section five is the goals and recommendations. The recommendations are based on a 10-year forecast and look at the types of things that we should be looking at as projects that you might want to fund. Number six is that new chapter on ecotourism and the Burke County Recreation Master Plan. And number seven is the implementation plan. And the only real new park or anything that we are recommending to develop is the land that Crescent gave us, the 140 acres in 2013, and developing that county park. And so that would be a type of park that would be for people just to come and to go. We don't see the activities and things that we build there as being heavy with staff or things like that. We also look at that park as an opportunity for public-private partnerships in this time of economic stress and that we think we could get others to invest who have an interest in the lake and in these environmental interests. So that's what I have. I know that you all have had an opportunity to look at the plan. I think it's rather good, maybe not perfect, but we gave it our best shot, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, gentlemen, questions for Scott?
Chairman, I have one. Scott, if you can go to page 210.
210.
They have listed the top priority projects for us. And I just wanna make sure that if we approve this plan, we're not agreeing that those projects are gonna go. We will, we don't know what next year might be, and something might change the priority. I just wanna make sure that we're not.
That's right.
Going to doing those projects as listed 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6.
That's right, sir. It's only a policy recommendation, something to look at and to consider. Everything always comes down to you and your decisions and your budget process. And this was just a snapshot in a space and time, and that was the recommendation that came.
But we have met many times on this, and you and I have talked about it several times. I wish we'd had a little bit more participation from the far east and the far west, but I do believe it's a good plan, and it's a good model for this county to look at and see if somewhere down the road can achieve it.
Thanks, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, what is the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I have the motion to approve the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
All right, you've heard the motion by Mayor. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Scott, thank you so very much.
Thank you, John.
All right, moving on to item number two on decisions is condemnation appeal case file number 035-15, 5870 Benfield's Landing Road, presented by Bradley Kirkley, Code Enforcement. Bradley?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, for your review and decision, we bring for you 5870 Benfield's Landing Road. The property in question is located up near Lake James. It contains three structures on the property. Those three structures have been in a state of disrepair for quite a few years. And based upon complaints, calls to the office, our office opened an investigation dealing with the property. And in conjunction with North Carolina general statute, we issued the property unsafe and ordered it to be condemned. That condemnation order was handed out by Steve Holden, the gentleman to my right. Steve is the chief building official for the county. That order was issued out on March 16th of this year. The structures in question, just to summarize, the roof structures are continuing to dilapidate, falling in on themselves. We've had multiple reports of vagrants being accessible there to the property. The property owner is not a North Carolina resident, does live out of state, and so to have someone on hand to constantly oversee the property is a chore. Within that general statute allowance, the order was issued out on the 16th. It's been included within your packet. Within that order and within general statute guidelines, a 10-day allowance is given for an appeal to be filed. That property owner did so, and that is what we bring for you tonight. Your options before you are to approve the order as it was handed out by Mr. Holden, which was 60 days for either demolition or massive renovation work to occur. You can approve and modify that order, or you can revoke the order altogether. Myself or Steve are welcome to any questions that you may have.
All right, gentlemen, any questions you may have or comments?
It's been too long. We need to follow the 60-day rule and be done with it and get rid of those buildings. They've been an eyesore for 40 years.
Mr. Chairman, you had stated during pre-agenda that you planned conduct. Has there been any conversation with him since the pre-agenda two weeks ago?
We have received multiple emails from the property owner. I do not know if the property owner is actually here this evening. He is present. Mr. Weinstock is here. He did state he was planning on making the trip down. Within the emails that he has sent, he's did some research into trying to renovate the structures themselves. A lot of that deals with variance applications, some issues with setbacks. The buildings are pre-existing, and a lot of the current rules that the county has for lake properties, these kinda don't really fall together. So a lot of variations are being explored. At no point in time was it ever discussed that the structures did not need repair and that they were not in need of some attention. But that's the last since pre-agenda that I've had in conversation.
Any other questions or comments?
Chairman, I have one.
Yes, sir.
What if this goes through, and what is the process? What would be our involvement in the property?
From this point forward, based upon your order, if the order is issued for the condemnation to be upheld, basically 60 days, if it's approved as issued 60 days from tonight's decision, the property owner would have that time to fulfill the order that is documented there in front of you. If he's wishing to renovate and modify the structures to bring them up to code and appearance criteria, he would have to do so during that time, or at least begin that process. Worst-case scenario for the county, should demolition or no renovations occur within the timetable that you set, the county would then have to come back, we would have to come back before you to ask for your blessing in securing a bid to have the structures demolished, which would cost county money.
Would this, could this open up a lawsuit between the parties if we start this process in demolishing this?
Not if everything based upon general statute has been followed, which to this point, we have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, one more. Bradley, in your best judgment, are they redeemable? Are the buildings redeemable?
In my best judgment, and I think I'll speak for Steve, in general, nothing is beyond repair. The question becomes how much of an investment does one seek to wish to do? Do they need a lot of attention? Yes. How much of that is wanting to be sought after? I'm not the property owner and can't answer that.
Bradley, you did make a statement in the front of your presentation that these buildings were unsafe. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And that is from the order of the building inspector. I myself do not have that authority to rule they're unsafe or not.
Could this be a good message? How much time did you say the land on the property owner wanted?
I believe within his appeal, it was requesting 120 days. I don't recall that definitive date there in front of me. But he was asking for more time to fulfill the needs required by the order.
I'm going to repeat a statement I've said earlier in pre-agenda. I've been driving by those buildings for 15 years or longer. I stopped the other day again. They are unsafe. And if vagrants are living there, that even makes it that much unsaver. Any other comments or questions? Gentlemen, in front of you, we have three things we can do. I want to reiterate that the commission can uphold the chief building inspector's ruling and timeline. We can uphold the building ruling and grant an additional 30, 60, 90 days to comply with the condemnation order, or we can overturn the inspector's ruling. So what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, on item number one, that means if the property owner could renovate those buildings, he would have time. those buildings, he would have time in that period under number one, right?
He would need to secure the necessary permits and begin work to do that. Within that order, we would like to see a substantial amount of that work completed within that 60-day time window.
So, would that fall under number one, under the options here?
Number one is the commission can uphold the chief building inspector's ruling and timeline.
Is that your timeline, or...?
Yes, that same 60 days is what was issued from the order.
I'll go ahead and make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the motion before you from Wayne is the commission uphold the chief building inspector's ruling and timeline. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed? That would be four to one, Madam Clerk. All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving on, going over item number three and four, which we tabled. Going to item number five is presentation of the recommended budget for fiscal years 1516 and scheduling of the public hearing presented by Bryanstein, County Manager. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's that time of year again, and in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government and Fiscal Control Act, I hereby present and submit for your review and adoption a balanced recommended budget for fiscal year 201516 that meets the immediate and long-term needs of the county and provides for goals desired by the board. I respectfully remind you that a mandatory public hearing for the recommended fiscal year 201516 budget has been scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on Tuesday, June 16th, 2015, in the Burke County Services Building Boardroom, entrance E110, North Green Street, Morganton, North Carolina. During February of 2015, a preliminary budget workshop was conducted to receive budget requests from department heads and other entities. The Burke County Public School System submitted their budget request on May 12th, 2015. The budget request from all requesters totaled a little over $80.5 million. In developing the fiscal year 201516 budget, I've reviewed our estimated revenues available for the upcoming year and our projected county operational costs, grant match requirements, and capital projects that are necessary to meet the needs of the county and entities that we fund. The budget theme for fiscal 201516 budget is the effective employment of available funds to provide required services and, at the same time, position the county for short-term and long-term success. To achieve this goal, I propose a significant grant match for a competitive grant from the Golden Leaf Foundation to enable expansion of the Megatronics program at Western Piedmont Community College. Our local advanced manufacturing companies are having significant difficulty in filling vacant positions. This hampers their ability to operate and to continue to offer employment opportunities in Burke County. It also impedes our ability to recruit additional advanced manufacturing companies and keep our youth from gaining employment here in Burke County. The proposed budget also enables the county to move forward with two major capital projects and provides the capacity to meet related future debt service payments. I will go ahead and start sharing these with you for your review, and this will be uploaded to our website this evening after our meeting concludes.
All right, any questions for Brian at this time, or any comments? Ladies and gentlemen, when this is uploaded to the website, you will be able to find And what is the recommendation from the board on Brian's presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I move to acknowledge receipt of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 1516 and to schedule a public hearing for June 16th, 2015 at 6:00 p.m. or as soon thereafter as persons may be heard.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That will be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Brian. Moving on to item number six, Fire Marshal, Burke County Rescue Squad Equipment Purchase Request presented by Mike Long, Fire Marshal. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I come to note that in the 2014-2015 budget, the county allotted the rescue squad $80,000 to purchase needed equipment. With that, this year, the Fire Marshal's Office, the Emergency Management Office, we managed that $80,000 and was able to purchase all the equipment that we had on our list at the time, with the savings of $9,683.40. After we looked at that and had the money, there's additional equipment that the rescue squad can need to help us fulfill some of the emergencies that we have up in Limal Gorge and around the area that we could use. Those are to purchase a victim trailer, to pull behind a four-wheeler, transport victims out of rugged terrain. That can be used also whenever the loop trails built around Lake James. It also can be used on the ORV trail that's in Brown Mountain, off of Brown Mountain Beach Road. We've had, in the last two weeks, we had three calls in that area already. So, that can be used. Also, the state has set up a new standard for mountain, Alpine Mountain rescue equipment. This is a lighter-weight equipment that can be used instead of us carrying the steel carabiners and so forth in Limal Gorge and bigger rope. They've come up with some smaller rope and lighter packs that we can purchase to carry into Limal Gorge. Help us with that. We could have used that last night. We actually transported a 15-year-old out from Table Rock last night. And then, another issue we'd like to purchase is a windshield cutter tool to go along with their extrication equipment that was purchased this year off of the money that was allotted. At this time, I can take any questions.
All right, gentlemen, questions for Mike?
Mr. Chairman, I had one, and I didn't reference the page, but it... No, that's another one. Excuse me. Yeah, I think that we've kind of discussed that pre-agenda, decided it's okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, to approve the use of the remaining funds, the amount of $96.83.40 to purchase needed rescue equipment for the Burke County Rescue Squad, as presented.
All right, you've heard the motion by Wayne. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That would be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Michael. Moving on to item number seven from General Services, the closure of the CND over MSW landfill at the Johns River Facility presented by Chris Hollifield, General Services Director. Chris?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In pre-agenda, you remember I presented to you a packet of information for your consideration on a request for funding to close the MSW... CND, excuse me, over MSW landfill at Johns River. In your packet is that breakdown of funding and the funding amount 171, and the tasks 1 through 6 is what that pays for.
Chris, for the benefit of the people in the audience that may be not familiar like I am sometimes, give us the definition of CND and MSW.
ABC 123, huh?
Yes, sir.
I certainly will. It is sort of confusing. And I'll back up and actually do a little bit of history. Since 1998, the... Up until 1998, Burke County operated a municipal solid waste landfill, garbage. MSW is what that's known as in the trade. That MSW landfill was closed in 1998 in February. Then, the landfill was converted over to CND, which means construction and demolition, so lumber, asphalt shingles, and things that would come from a demolition of a structure. That's operated since 1998 as a CND landfill. That cell, the large hill, if you go out to the landfill to throw your garbage in, you drive up and get mulch or something, you see that huge hill. That's the hill we're talking about in question. So, it's a cap, one on top of the other. MSW on the bottom, garbage. On the top is CND. That's now reached its capacity, and we need to close that for our permit. We've moved, as you know, in the past, we've done permitting and moved over to a site that's in the hole back towards the road, and that's now becoming... That's just CND, no MSW at that site since 98. So, the six items that are listed there underneath the budgetary effect with total 171, that would involve the fiscal work as well as the admin work and permit change to actually close the landfill.
All right, questions or comments for Chris? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve contract with Joyce Engineering for $171,000, subject to review under revision by the county attorney. Authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of the board and to appropriate $171,000 of solid waste enterprise fund fund balance.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That would be five to nothing, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, Chris?
Yes.
Where do tires go now, Chris?
Tires are collected at the landfill on past the transfer station before you get to this site, and they are packed inside a trailer, and then the trailer is sent to a recycler.
Do we get any money for those, or...?
We... If there is a market, we get money. The recycling market's sort of cyclical.
All right.
So, depending on the market, yes.
Is there a fee charged to bring those tires to the landfill?
Above the fee for the use of the landfill that comes on your taxes, no.
But I think when you buy a set of tires, don't you pay a fee?
Correct.
For those old tires.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, if not, we'll move on to item number eight, General Services Water and Sewer, the Anis Street, CDBG Water and Sewer Bid Award presented by Chris.
Thank you, gentlemen. The packet in front of you details, as I presented in pre-agenda, the Anis Street is a street off of Highway 70 down east towards Hildebrand, and that area was surveyed for a community development block grant to provide water and sewer service there. It did meet the requirements, and 17 residents on that street will be... During this project, will be hooked up for water and sewer for the county. The project is administered by Western Piedmont Council Government, the COG, as we call them. West Consultants is the engineer of record, and then, of course, we're the oversight construction admin for that. The project is comprised of a little over 1,000 feet of 8-inch water line... Or sewer line, excuse me. 450 feet of 6-inch water line, and then, at the very end, there's a 2-inch piece, about 600 feet of 2-inch water line, and all the appliances that go with it, meters and setters and the service connections. The nice thing... These are nice projects to present to you because these... This project is funded completely by CDBG, so the amount of $333,350 is financed 100% by CDBG and cost the county zero, grant-funded.
Questions or comments for Chris on this matter?
Clarification?
Yes, sir.
I thought, Chris, that we had passed ruling in the past that all our water lines at the minimums, 8 inches, the main carriers. Is this not ten under that, or is it six acceptable, or...?
Yes, six is the minimum meant to be able to provide fire flow. And what happens at the end of the line, it's a dead-end line that goes up the street and just stops. At the end of the line, to provide for water quality, they want less water in the line, so they nick it down at the end of the line, and that last piece to serve the remainders at the end of the line would be 2-inch. But what that 6-inch provides you is fire protection for the entire street.
So, we're not breaking our own policy with this?
No, sir.
Wayne, do you think else?
One comment I failed to mention, Mr. Chairman, is we are asking you to award the contract to the low bidder, which I did not cover with you in this meeting, which is Clark Ledbetter Grading. They were the low bidder, and the price to bid at the bid was $189,105, quite a bit lower. You were provided the sealed bid tab, of course, in that packet. I have worked successfully with Clark Ledbetter Grading, as has our engineer on record, David Poore at West, and so we'd recommend... The recommendation letter is also in your packet, and we'd recommend awarding that contract to Clark Ledbetter.
What's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the bid for Anis Street Water and Sewer Project to Clark Ledbetter Grading Incorporated for $189,105, and authorize the county manager to execute the contract, subject to review and revision by the county manager.
All right, you've heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be five to nothing. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to item number five from our HR Department, Employee Health and Wellness Clinic, RFP, presented by Rhonda Lee, our HR Director. Rhonda and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. While they're getting their place here, I just want to tell you that tonight, we're here to continue the conversation that we started several months ago about the provision of an employee wellness clinic, and hopefully, if the board is so inclined, make a staff recommendation on a provider to do that for us. So, by sort of way of review, you know, a few months ago, we held a meeting with the commissioners to go over the concept of establishing an employee wellness clinic with one of the goals being to try to lower the cost of what we incur for medical cost. As you remember, in one of those discussions, the county is self-funded on insurance, which means that if you go to the doctor, you're going to pay your copay, depending on what your... You know, if you're an HSA or the traditional plan, and then, you know, the county will receive a bill for what the visit actually costs over and above that from the provider. So, when we're looking at a way to minimize that cost, because we are self-funded, you know, and we're not trying to replace individual physicians or anything like that, we're trying to look at alternatives where we can provide a lower cost, so when we use those taxpayer dollars to pay medical costs for our insurance coverage for employees and defendants, that, you know, we stretch those dollars and provide a lower-cost service. And that way, we can not only, you know, lower our costs, get our employees back to work, but, you know, and it's for the routine things. Like I said, we're not out to replace physicians or displace any of those kind of services, but we're looking at acute, I guess, you know, minimal kinds of things that in your RFP copy, you'll see several of the services listed, and I'm not going to get into that unless the board just wants to, unless the HR folks want to get into that. But, you know, we will sort of, you know, give you a background on what process the staff has taken over the last couple of months. You know, back in March, we had a special meeting, and at that meeting, the board directed HR staff to issue an RFP, get information, you know, on how clinics are provided, you know, what the cost would be, and bring those back to the board and enable the board to make a decision as to whether that is something that in next year's budget that they would like to implement. So, we developed an RFP... Well, I say we. HR developed an RFP that was reviewed by the chairman and vice chairman, the county manager and myself, county attorney, and so we did that, submitted, you know, that on, I think it was March 27th, if I remember correctly. We had five responses. Staff took those responses, narrowed it down to the bottom three, and we actually ended up interviewing the bottom three, the manager, myself, HR director, assistant HR director. We talked to the folks about their proposal, because obviously, you know, when you submit something like that, there's all kind of questions on, you know, what you meant by this, what you meant by that. Just want to make, you know, sure that everybody understood what the dollars were, what they were proposing on. So, we held those interviews. We actually visited a clinic run by each of those three organizations to get firsthand look at how those clinics were ran, you know, questions, concerns, issues that they had encountered in their clinics. So, we came back, and I think in your material, there is a recap of the three firms or companies that we looked at. And at this time, and I'll let HR, if they want to, you know, add anything, but I'm just going to sort of cut to the bottom, you know, line. As far as in terms of dollars, the three proposals that I think you have the information on, one is very misleading, because the low proposal that we're considering is basically non-responsive from Health Alliance On-Site. Their proposal only reflects a 48-week year. The other firms, you know, responded with a 52-week year. Our proposal asked for, you know, 20 hours a week, you know, for the year. So, you know, their proposal, you know, is based on a 48-week year, and also without a medical office assistant, which is, you know, what we include in the proposal. You know, we were looking to have this clinic staffed by an advanced care practitioner and a medical office assistant. So, the other two proposals of the bottom three included, you know, a 52-week year and a medical office assistant. So, if you're just looking at bottom-line numbers, please take that into consideration that, you know, it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison on... With the Health Alliance On-Site proposal, so... So, our recommendation from a staff point is that we contract with Carolina's healthcare systems to establish the employee wellness clinic. And we'll be glad to answer any questions, and if there's anything I've left out, you know, I'll let the HR director and assistant director, you know, point that out, or any questions the board may have, we'll try to answer.
I think he's covered most everything.
Patrick, anything?
He's covered everything.
Gentlemen, questions for these three staff members?
On July 4th, when everything closes down, they'll... Paul, on July fourth, when everything closes down, they'll close and then on, on Christmas week?
Well, the, the concept would be, because, you know, we want the, the clinic to be successful. So that means it needs to be open when we're open. So in, in the way we're looking at operating the clinic, you know, if, if we're closed for a holiday, then the other, the clinic would not be operational. So it would, you know, but that, and that's why we were looking at, you know, the, you know, as far as an operating standpoint, and of course, we haven't gotten into the specifics of, you know, how the day-to-day operations would, would work. I mean, that, you know, when you actually went into, to develop the contract and get, you know, those kind of things worked out in the contract. But, you know, the concept would be if the county is open, then the clinic's open. And of course, you know, the other issue there in that regard is, you know, if that provider, that advanced care provider, if they are not there for some reason, if they, you know, you know, becomes ill or, you know, have to be gone for training, you know, how's that clinic covered? Well, of the firms that, you know, that we looked at, we feel like the Carolina's healthcare system, you know, they have the resources more so than the others to make sure that the clinic is operational if the advanced care practitioner that is normally there is absent for some reason.
We were told, I think, Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Go ahead.
You know, we would start at one sixty-five to, and then we go to thirty, we're already over the one sixty-five. Everybody, about everybody I've talked to, at least four counties, they start in that low number and three out of the four are already at over the four-hundred-thousand-dollar mark. But as I have explained before, I've got, I've got an issue with this. It's just Maynard, it's nobody else, it's none of the other commissioners. I just have a bad feeling when we continue to any of the money, taxpayers' money, to make things better for our employees and not consider who's paying the bill. And that bothers me the biggest of anything said about this, this program. I understand the concept of it. I have one contact that told me they wish they didn't have it any longer. But I understand that y'all are promising and guaranteeing a lower cost somewhere and we don't know where it's going to be and we don't know when it's going to be. Is that correct?
Well, let's back up a minute. You know, I'm not promising you and guaranteeing you anything. I'm just saying that, you know.
Neither are we.
In theory, if, and, and it is driven strictly by utilization. I mean, if, if we do not get the participation, and I guess right now, we did a survey, because the commissioners asked, you know, to survey staff and see what they thought. So, I mean, I'll ask HR folks to share with you what the, the employee survey, the results were on that.
Patrick, I'll let you, since you did this right here.
Yeah, we, when we prepared at the direction of the board, we prepared the survey and delivered the survey to all county employees utilizing the survey tool, Survey Monkey. We sent that out and we had approximately two hundred and fifty-seven responses, which is more than valid survey. That's more than fifty percent response rate on an employee survey. In all my years of HR and doing employee surveys, that is an overwhelming response rate of an employee survey. Ninety-one point zero five percent said yes. Question one, do you currently have a primary care provider? Because we wanted to know that, because that's an important question to understand that if employees are utilizing a primary care provider, which is good, we're glad. But it also tells us that providing the clinic at no cost gives us an option, if they go to the no-cost clinic, to divert some of our costs, what would we pay for a primary care visit? And we had showed, or Rhonda had showed a slide on that or demonstrated a slide on that in, in a previous session. We only had twenty-three responses of, of employees saying they did not have a primary care provider. Question two, obviously, is a very important question for us. How likely are you to go to a no-co-pay employee health clinic for the basis of health service such as cold, sinus, minor illness, flu, disease prevention? Again, providing the no-cost clinic. The combined response rate at, over eighty percent said extremely likely and very likely that they, they would go to a clinic. And we're looking at approximately two hundred and nine employees said they would utilize that clinic. If that is in fact the case, the utilization rate needed to, for the clinic to succeed, would, would add up at this point? That, that is clearly an indication to us that this is something our employees would use for that. Question three, we, it came into, because we have dependents on the insurance coverage and we asked our employees, those who have dependent coverage, would, you know, would the dependents likely go to a non-co-pay employee health and wellness clinic if it was offered at no cost? There, the response was a little mixed. It was still in favor by the employees that said that they would use it. But as I would understand, perhaps employees would probably have questions about, well, if I can bring my child or my dependent, how would that work? Would I do it during work time? How, so there's probably some, some pause for some employees on how the dependents, and, and that's okay. That's probably not surprising to us. It is favorable. But again, the main driver was question number two is would our employees go? And that is, and that question was overwhelmingly yes, that, that they would for the population. That, that answered this question. And certainly question four, to ensure, or, or as a driver to keep employees engaged at work, if an employee was at work, they started feeling ill, they were able to go to the clinic on work time, get treatment and come back to work, would, would they likely go? And yes, the employees, at ninety-five point seven-two percent said, oh yes, I'll go to the clinic if I can go on work time, which is ninety-five point seven-two percent they would. Now, you got to balance that with the, the first, you know, response of how many people say that we're likely and very likely to go. So those, that survey was a, a very big driver. The fifth question was more of a anecdotal or response. What would prevent you going, to going, prevent you from going to an employee health clinic? And we had multiple responses, you know, that ranged from, people just answered the question saying, well, they don't know, to not sure, would their supervisor let them? You know, they were concerned about privacy. They're also concerned, you know, would, would the provider, would I get good health coverage from the provider? And we know through our research and study that the hiring of that advanced care practitioner is critical to success to the clinic. There's no doubt about that. And so, and when we visited other health clinics, the feedback we got, regardless of who was providing the clinic, that advanced care provider was the real key, where employees felt comfortable, they felt confident, they felt their privacy was protected, they felt they got good care. And of course, we want good care for our employees in this situation. And that was also a driver to the success of the clinic. And so while we heard that in our research, clearly our employees are telling us that. That's what we've heard. And so if this is to go forward, that would be a critical hire. And that's built into the RFP and it's built into the contract that, that with Carolina healthcare system that we would be involved in the selection of that advanced care practitioner. The county would have a say-so in who that person is. And we would be monitoring the performance of that individual and providing feedback again. So all the metrics here at this point really indicate that, that this, that the probability for success of this clinic is strong at this, at this stage of the process. Thank you.
And, and I'm, no, I'm, I'm not going to alleviate Commissioner Taylor's, you know, concern, obviously. But, you know, the, I think the, a couple of things to keep in mind is that, you know, it appears that, you know, we're going to get some, you know, the participation that we need to, you know, make it a go. If not, the fallback is, you know, we're not locking, locking into anything long-term. You know, the contract will be structured to where, you know, depending on what the board wants to do, one year, two years, whatever the board feels comfortable, that, you know, it needs to, to be in order to give it a, a, a good shot. You know, the contract, we will be able to get out of the contract. So we're not, you know, committing ourselves long-term until we see that, you know, it's working or it's not. And, you know, we will commit, you know, reports, any kind of reports the board wants to know about utilization and, you know, and how it's going, we'll make those on whatever interval the, the board feels, you know, is necessary. And, you know, it will be monitored. And like I said, if it's not working, then, you know, we terminate the contract. We tried it, you know, we, we move on. So, you know, it's not, it's not something that we're, we're marrying ourselves to, you know, by, by doing this. And if, if we have success like some of these other places, you know, yeah, we're looking at maybe, you know, less than two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost now. But if we want to expand it, then that's where your cost is going to go up. You know, and, and some of these places like, I think Colwell, where they've increased their hours, then, you know, their cost has gone up. But I'd like to think that, well, they wouldn't be adding hours and increasing cost if they weren't realizing, you know, savings on their medical cost. You know, so they would have been, you know, eliminating altogether instead of expanding, so.
And we are currently paying in excess of four million dollars on healthcare costs for Burke County. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And it is our desire and intent to drive that four million down.
Right. Yeah. Like I said earlier, we're, you know, we're not trying to compete with the medical profession. We're just trying to interject, you know, hopefully a lower-cost option. So, you know, when Mr. Taylor was talking about, you know, the taxpayer dollars, you know, we're paying medical costs now, you know, whether you go to a primary care physician, emergency room, urgent care. You know, we're going to pay those costs under the current program we have. So if we can, you know, have a lower-cost alternative, you know, maybe we save some of those visits to the urgent care and emergency room even, or some of those, you know, primary visits. And, you know, so what we're spending, you know, we can bring down and make those dollars go a little further.
Chairman, two, two other quick questions. And one of them has to do with how do you go from a hundred and forty-four to the bid, your suggestion, one eighty-six? What was the primary difference between the one eighty-six coverage and the four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand dollar coverage? Did anybody do any comparison on that?
The, the what? The one, one eighty-six to which one?
To the top one, four seventy-seven.
Oh, I'm.
No, you're speaking to the highest bid that came in is what you're speaking to. And we couldn't see a whole lot of, of difference with that of what they would be providing for us. So we just automatically threw that one out. We didn't take that into consideration for that response, for that one.
Two and a half times higher.
Yeah, yeah. It was just way outside the range on there. Mm-hmm.
Just, just a final comment, Mr. Chairman. I've been reading insurance till I'm insurance-blind almost. But anyhow, the, you know, I share with you that my own Ken folks closed a business at the advice of his accountant. His insurance was more than his payroll. And I read a comment, and I'm sure most of y'all did on the internet, about Gastonia. And they were going to add their commissions to the county commission. And they had to keep it after they got defeated or they no longer served as county commissioner. And there was a lot of ruckus about it and they pulled it. And then just today on the internet, yesterday and today, a lot of information about the Obama insurance and just how bad it was and it wasn't working, et cetera, et cetera. It must be working for some, but anyhow, I just, I feel like there's a little bit too much favoritism, if that's, or super-serving a small group of our citizens at the cost of the entire county. It just bothers me. And as you said, you can't win all that for me. I just pray that you understand why I say that.
Well, in, in this day and time, obviously, insurance cost is a large expense for anybody. I mean, it's a large number for the county. And that's why, as a staff, we're trying to look at things that we can do in order to, you know, keep those costs as low as possible. And it's like if we don't make an attempt to do something and just let it go, you know, as it's going, then, you know, we're, we're really not positioning ourselves to, for the long run. So again, that is up to the board as far as whether they would like to, you know, see this happen next budget year. Again, staff's recommendation would be to contract with Carolina's healthcare system if the board's so inclined to do that.
Paul, will this be up and running then by, will we be able to have it up and running by the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I think, you know, from what we've understand, it's going to take sixty, ninety days to, as Rhonda was telling earlier, you know, to hire that, you know, advanced care practitioner and get, you know, sort of the logistics worked out of the clinic up and going, yeah, it's going to take some, some period of time. So, you know, I probably wouldn't get going for October first at the earliest.
When we, whoever we contract with, how often, Rhonda, do we expect to see? Would our, this board expect to see identifiable data to say whether we're working or not working? Can we see it in ninety days or should we see it in sixty days? What do you project for that?
Well, in speaking to the different vendors that we spoke with, we would be receiving, HR would be receiving data every month that we could in turn share with commissioners. We could bring it to you, I guess, on a delayed monthly basis, or we could quarterly, whatever would be the pleasure of the board that we would like that. But we are going to definitely be looking at that, the return on investment, the utilization. And we could share that, again, monthly or quarterly.
Okay, so that's in your contract with whomever we contract with to supply you that data monthly?
Yes. Well, we can, we don't have a contract yet, but when we get to that point, we can, you know, find, you know, work those.
I would like to see that in the contract.
Sure.
But in all, in all fairness, it's probably going to take a year and even, even maybe the second year to, to really realize the savings that we're looking at. I mean, you can't judge that thing on a six-month period or whatever, so.
But I think as soon as we get the reports coming in so that it's transparent all the way, then we can make some, some good decisions on it. Any other questions or comments?
My comment is, where is this clinic going to be?
It's proposed to be located in the Health Department.
But we're not sure?
Well, that.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's our plan.
That, that's, there's, it's where the dental clinic was before and there's several rooms there. And we've got the health director here if, if we need to explain more on, on the, where we're planning to locate this. We would like to have the entrance for the employees to come in the back way instead of being in the general population with everybody else, so, for privacy issues and stuff. So that's kind of what we have in mind for the location.
And the hours this clinic will operate?
It would be twenty hours per week.
From?
And we would be looking at the morning, the morning hours.
From eight in the morning till twelve or six or whatever?
We don't have that fine-tuned yet, but we, we can, it would be in the morning hours right now.
What would you suggest the hour would be?
Right now, from what we've seen from other counties, you can see some where they would have it in the morning and the afternoon. So I think most of them are in the morning, right? Most of them are in the morning hours.
Well, my position is simple. This is, it's good intention. But, you know, when people get sick and need to see a healthcare provider, they need to see it now. That's me.
Sure.
And I don't want to wait until, until eight o'clock tomorrow morning or Monday morning when I'm sick on Saturday or Sunday. So I, I don't really see, you know, the county saving that much money for this clinic because of the hours that's going to be available for the people to go and speak to a health provider. So I, in that regard, I don't, I, I can't see this. And I'm somewhat like Mr. Taylor is, but, you know, if it was twenty-four-seven, I'd be more than happy to sign on, but I know that, that's impossible because of the cost of it.
And it may be that, you know, the utilization is so good that, you know, we want to expand it to, you know, a forty-hour-a-week clinic, but, yeah, we're not ever going to get twenty-four-seven though.
The way things go around here, we might have that one day. But anyway, I, that's, that's my position. I, I can't, I can't support it the way it's this, at this time with the understanding that the hours is going to be and the things are going to be available. What I see this is going to happen, the people go to see these health providers and they're going to be referred back to someone else, some specialist, some doctor, some hospital for whatever else that employee. So in that sense, I, I don't see where you save money there. That's just my thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Jeff.
Chairman, I, I think we got, again, we got to look at the big picture. And the big picture is cutting our healthcare costs in the long run. And I think we owe it to our taxpayers to at least. to at least try. It might not work, but at least we can say we tried. And I, I think in all fairness, we got to give it, you know, probably two years. But, I, I think, from everything I read, I think I see a savings in our, I mean, healthcare costs are going up so dramatically. We might not save any money in that $4 million, but we might be able to contain that $4 million, you know, where it doesn't jump up so high. But, I, I think in all fairness to our taxpayers, we, we, we got to try these different things to try to save the county money.
Any other questions or comments? All right, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Chairman, I move we award the RFP contract for the Employee Health and Wellness Clinic for fiscal year 15, '16 to Carolina's Healthcare System. In the amount, I believe that amount's 186, 826, is that correct?
Yes.
With an option for the county to renew for one additional year. Further authorize the county manager to execute the contract on behalf of the Board, subject to the review and modification of the county attorney.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. All opposed. Carries three to two, Madam Clerk. Thank you all.
Thank you.
For the hard work you've done on this. Moving on to item number 10, is the Joint School Capital Planning Committee. Gentlemen, let me give you a summary of the information. It is that the Burke County Board of Education wants to form a Joint School Capital Planning Committee with us as commissioners to do the following. The committee would consist of members of both Boards, but its work product would be advisory-only. Quorum of each of the meeting would consist of the actual members of the Board members who attended, and each Board would select a chair, a co-chair, and a co-chair of the Board of Education, which would be Don Hymm Street. For the Board of Commissioners, that would be Wayne Abley. The co-chairs would have equal authority and must jointly make all decisions regarding process and procedures. The committee would conduct fact-finding into school capital needs based on the recent study conducted by the Western Piedmont Council of Governments and other relevant data. And by January 2016, the committee should finalize any recommendation to the two Boards for official action by each of the Board. And lastly, adoption of this motion is contingent on approval by the Burke County Board of Commissioners under the same conditions as set forth above. The Board of Education has already presented this and passed it. The total goal of this is for the two members, which would be Wayne and Don Hymm Street, to set, set together and decide what route we want to take with the Board of Commissioners in a collaborative effort with the Board of Education. So, I present this to you, and I will entertain any questions or comments. Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move to create the Joint School Capital Planning Committee as outlined above, and appoint Vice Chairman Abley as the Burke County Co-Chair.
All right, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That would be five to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so much, gentlemen. Wayne, do us a good job on there, please.
Well, I, I hope 216 might be a little short in the goal. I mean, we've been talking about this for maybe 30 years, since the Blue Ribbon Education Committee, about, you know, some of our older schools and the cost of keeping them up, and merging a couple of those schools maybe into a new facility. So, I, I don't think, I hope 216, January 216 is going to be all right, but there's a lot of work to be done there. And that's probably going to be a pretty tough thing, because, you know, as soon as you talk about closing an old school or whatever, and a new school, grandma went there, and mom went there, and, oh, we don't want to close our old school. So, I don't know if we're going to make any friends on this, but we're going to sure attempt it and do a good job for you.
Well, I'm very proud of you, and thank you for taking this assignment. Moving on to our reports and comments from the Board of Staff and Staff, County Attorney?
I don't have any comment tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else, Brian?
Well, I'm sure it's the one thing y'all have been waiting for all night, that the proposed budget, the recommended budget, is based on staying at the current tax rate.
Yeah, we, we figured that.
I just wanted to make sure there was no doubt.
I think, I think you had your traveling orders on that.
Brian, would you talk about our little trip to Valdez last night? Do you mind?
We had the occasion to go to Valdez last night to see the installment of the new town manager, Seth. I don't remember his last name from Sawmill.
Eckard.
Okay. And he's coming on board, and we welcomed him. We're pleased, and wish him much success, as well as the Valdez Town Council and the citizens of Valdez.
Wayne?
I, I guess we won't be meeting, except for that special meeting tomorrow before Memorial Day, and just remember our veterans and all they do for this great country.
All right, thank you, sir. Maynard?
Ditto what Wayne said, plus pray for rain, folks. We need it.
Absolutely. Maynard, you want to give us a, kind of, give the folks a little update on our County Assembly Day, the travel we had down there?
Well, I think all three of us, three of us went. We did get to see most of the people we went to see. We had good meetings, and I think very healthy meetings with our House of Representatives and Senators. And I think the big news that the meeting was visited by our governor, who announced that they had paid off the Medicare Medicaid loan. And he had two of his sidekicks with him who gave us a real good talk, and I forgot the other one's name, Moore, Tim Moore.
Tim Moore, Speaker.
And who else on the?
Field Burger.
Field Burger. So, I think we had a good meeting, and one thing I'd like to say is that just talking to and visiting with county commissioners after and during, everybody seemed to be upbeat and happy and progressive, and happy of the good news that we appear to be moving forward. And North Carolina has moved up as several places as a good place to come and do business, and we want you to come.
Thank you, sir. Jeff?
No comments.
Act.
Mayor, if you were in a meeting and they were progressive, you're in the wrong meeting. No more, nothing.
Madam Clerk?
None for me, thank you.
Thank you. I would like to report about a trip that I made to Macon County, a two-day trip for, with the North Carolina County Commissioners Association, where we're in the process of setting a strategic plan for the association. We have just finished up a 10-year plan, and we're getting ready to adopt another five-year plan for the association. And I was proud to be part of that process. That process is not finished. We will have another meeting in Raleigh next week to try to finalize that and set a strategic plan for the County Commissioners Association. And I look forward to going to that. Let's move now to the vacancy announcements. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We are accepting applications for the following boards and committees: the Hickory Regional Planning Commission, the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, the Council on Aging, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the City of Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, the City of Morganton Planning Board, ETJ, the Voluntary Agriculture Board, the Library Board of Trustees, Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Western Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees.
Okay, if we don't have, we have no need for a closed session, and if no one else has any comments, I'm going to declare us in recess until 3:00 tomorrow, when we will meet at the county manager's office. All right, thank you.